All right, all right, listen, you gotta get out of here.
I know what's in there. You should just look at it.
I know.
I see that.
I know.
Can we, can we?
We all got one.
No, I know.
Oh, yeah, it's like a headline.
No, but this is when we get finished, Will.
Was everybody's like that or no?
I don't know.
Five bucks.
We got thirty-two items.
Week.
Run it, we gonna run it.
Mr. Clerk, if you would please call a roll.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Van Johnson.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem and District Five Alderwoman, Dr. Estella Edwards Shabazz.
Present.
Chairman and District Four Alderman, Nick Palumbo.
Present.
Vice Chair and District Three Alderwoman, Linda Wilder-Bryan.
Good evening, all right, he's ready, let's go.
Post One Alderwoman, Carolyn H. Bell.
Present.
Post Two Alderwoman, Alicia Miller Blakely.
Present.
District One Alderwoman, Bernetta B. Lanier.
Present.
District Two Alderman, Dietrich Leggett.
Here.
And District Six Alderman, Curtis Purtee.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. All rise. I call this meeting of the Savannah City Council to order. Today is November the seventh, two thousand twenty-four. The time is approximately two forty-two. We want to thank everyone joining us here today and across our various media platforms. Savannah will be a safe, environmentally healthy, and economically thriving community for all of its citizens, and all means all. Today's invicator will be introduced by Alderwoman Post One, Carolyn Hodges-Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Coming to us today to provide our inspiration is Dr. Jacqueline Gilbert Grant. Jackie is the presiding prelate overseer of the Sanctuary of Praise Christian Assembly in Savannah, Georgia. She is an author and a sought-after motivational speaker who ministers at women's conferences, retreats, and seminars. She's a native Savanian, educated in the Chatham County Public School System. She received her religious training from, with a master's degree in biblical studies from Trinity Bible College and from Oral Roberts University. She is revered for her leadership guidance and dedication to the spiritual development of women. She's the founder of several women's organizations. She's a publisher, she's an author. She is many things to many people and well-known in this community. As an author, developing your spiritual gifts for the working of the ministry, boss up for purpose when the water breaks, and her latest book release caught up, The Rapture. She's won many awards, citations throughout the years, and it goes on and on. But I am privileged to say that not only is she all of those things, but she is my best friend. I have known Jackie down through the years, and she's stood with me through some good times and some bad times. When asked what inspires her, Bishop Grant shares, "My daily inspiration and life's motivation are because of Hebrews 11:6. But without faith it is impossible to please him; for he that cometh to God must believe that he is, and that he is a rewarder, of them that diligently seek him." Also, Second First Peter five and ten. "But the God of all grace, who hath called us unto his eternal glory by Christ Jesus, after that ye have suffered for a while, make you perfect, establish, strengthen, and settle you." And lastly, tough times don't last, but tough people do, Dr. Jackie Grant.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
To our mayor and our council and all of you Savanians who've got to be here, thanking my friend Carol for that long introduction. And we, and we just want to say we're grateful to being, having this opportunity to give the words of inspiration again in this building, because it's been a long time, Mr. Mayor. Amen, amen. Let us pray. Father, in the masterless name of Jesus, we come today to tell you thank you. We thank you for your goodness, and we thank you for your mercy. We thank you for your loving kindness, for great is thy faithfulness unto us. You've brought us through many dangers, toils, and snares, and because of your goodness and because of your grace, we are still here. We thank you because many of us, and even in the city of Savannah, we've had some hard and rough times, but we made it. We are on the other side of the hurdle, and because of that, we give glory to your name. We give glory and praise unto you, for you are the author and the finisher of our faith. You are the one that started us believing, oh God. And when things will be over, we will yet believe that our God is a great God, and He rules and He reigns throughout the world. God, we thank you right now for Savannah. We thank you for those that are leading us in this city. Anoint them afresh and keep their hearts and their minds dedicated to the city of Savannah. Do great and mighty things through all of them, oh God, in the name of Jesus. We ask you right now, God, that we bind all things that will come up against this council, that there will be unity, there will be love, and there will be peace. And as they do the work of Him that sent them, they will know that they can do great and mighty things, and turn this city, and shift us into the place where we need to be. We asking you right now, God, as our mayor, continue to lead us and be that person that we look to. Oh God, we ask right now that you give him fresh manna from on high, and even bless him on Friday Night Live, that he can give us a word of inspiration as he so often do. So now, God, we come to you. We come to you with our hands lifted up and our mouths filled with praise. We give you glory, we give you dominion. And now unto him who's able to keep us from falling and to present us spotless. You are the only wise God, and you have given us a world without end. Be thy glory, dominion, and power, now and forever, we say amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Let us honor our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, and thank you, Bishop Jacqueline Grant of the Sanctuary of Praise. We appreciate you being here, and since you've prayed so well, you're excused from this Friday Night Live, so you're excused. So, it's okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
First of all, let me apologize again, we're getting started a little bit late. We had city business we had to take care of, and we needed to make sure we provided that time to make sure we execute it appropriately. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion for the first item on our agenda. Let's make a motion for the adoption of the regular meeting agenda for November seventh, two thousand twenty-four. Second.
Been properly moved, and seconded that we approve the regular meeting agenda for November the seventh, two thousand twenty-four. You've heard the motion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the next two items, two and three, for the approval of the minutes for the work session and city manager's briefing held on October the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at twelve o'clock PM, and for the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on October twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, at two o'clock PM.
Second. Been properly moved, and seconded that we approve the minutes for the work session and city manager's briefing held on October the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at twelve PM, and approval of the minutes for the regular meeting held on October the twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four, at two PM. You've heard the motion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number four is the adoption of a two thousand twenty-five meeting calendar for the mayor and alderman for the city of Savannah.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the item as it is written. Second.
Been properly moved, and seconded that all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, we have a series of proclamations. The first will be presentation of a proclamation, well, let me, let me, well, yeah, proclamation designating November the third as Retired Educators' Day in the city of Savannah. Alderman Shabazz.
Yes, sir. Do it right here?
It's up to you.[1754.82]
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the item as it is written.
Second motion.
Then properly move the second, and all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now, we have a series of proclamations. The first will be presentation of a proclamation. Well, let me, let me, well, yeah, proclamation designating November the third as Retired Educators' Day in the city of Savannah. Alderman Shabazz.
Yes, sir. Do it right here?
It's up to you.
Good afternoon, ladies. Hello.
Hi. Hello.
The City of Savannah, Georgia proclamation. Whereas the City of Savannah recognizes the invaluable contributions of our retired educators who have dedicated their lives to shaping, educating, and inspiring generations of students. And whereas retired educators touched and influenced the lives of generations of young people, motivating and inspiring their students to use their innate talents and abilities to fulfill, promoting them to become responsible, contributing citizens. And whereas their influence extends far beyond the classroom, as these educators have helped build a foundation of lifelong learning, empowered young minds, and strengthened our community's future. And whereas many of our retired educators continue to give back, serving as mentors, volunteers, and avocators, furthering their commitment to education and civic engagement in Savannah. And whereas it is fitting that we honor these dedicated individuals, expressing our deep gratitude for their service and acknowledging the lasting impact they have had on our city's educational landscape. Now therefore be it resolved that our mayor.
I, Van R. Johnson II, mayor of the city of Savannah, do hereby proclaim November the third, two thousand twenty-four, as Retired Educators' Day in Savannah, Georgia, and encourage all citizens to celebrate the invaluable contributions of our retired educators and to express our heartfelt appreciation for the lasting impact on our community. And witness whereof, I've set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Savannah to be affixed. So. Everything I've learned, I've learned from a teacher. Come on.
I want to thank our mayor and the city council for acknowledging the educators who have given so much of their lives, the retired educators who are still working, still sharing, and still loving on our children. Thank you all so much.
Very good. Thank you all very much.
I want to know who said y'all could be retired. Y'all don't look like retired folks. Y'all look mighty good to be retired folks, so. But thank you so much. We are so appreciative. Thank you.
Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Can they please introduce themselves?
Certainly. Well, one is still working. I know that.
Good afternoon, city council and Savanians. My name is Dr. Brenda Roberts, and I am a retired, refired school counselor, because I'm still working. I just left the counselor's conference to come down here, so I'm on my way back now.
All right.
Sixth district. There you go.
Good afternoon, and I'm Dottie Flats.
Good afternoon. I'm Annette Smith, thirty years teaching.
All right.
Hello, my name is Princessa Simmons, now serving as the president of the Chatham Retired Educators, and I served for forty wonderful years.
Wonderful.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all you do. Thank you. We'll also take a moment of personal privilege. Another retired educator is here. Our chairman, Chairman Chester Ellis, is here, so good to see you, sir, and congratulations on your reelection. Good to see you. I'm going to ask my brothers and sisters of Noble to come up, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, to come up to talk about an initiative that is very important for us. Many of you all know that I'm a retired law enforcement professional, and for years have been engaged, well over twenty-five years have been engaged with the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives. And in being engaged with them, we've come up with a great partnership with the National Child ID Program and the NFL. I don't know which I can talk about it?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For the record, my name is Major Ben Heron, and I'm competing with Sergeant Banks, Chief Gunther, and Assistant Chief Adams, who are all Noble members. This partnership was initiated in what we're doing right now. The mayor took the initiative, and he worked with the state president, excuse me, the state president, to do a kickoff for the ID program for Noble. And so basically what it is, it's a partnership with NFL alumni who has taken an interest in human trafficking. And so one of the things that we were trying to do with this is create a national push to alert parents of human trafficking and a step that they could take to prevent, you know, their children from, if they're victimized, unfortunately, they would have something to give to law enforcement. And so we recognize that a thousand children go missing each day in this country, and this is Noble's effort in disseminating these kits to parents to allow them to take that extra step, in addition to talking to them about safety, to have records on hand, so if the unfortunate event happens and their child is missing, they're able to provide information to law enforcement. And so this information is for the parents, is not for us, to maintain a record. This is something that we provide to them, and they follow the instructions, and they pull the information together, and then they keep it in a safe space, so any event they need to recall the information, they can get it. And basically, it's pretty much straightforward. There's information on the child that's listed here. There is a place for fingerprints. It's accompanied with a powerless fingerprint pad to run the child's fingerprint. And there's also a section for DNA. They write down on it, and they can leave the DNA, and then there's an area where they can take a picture, a current picture, and affix it to this, put it back in an envelope, and again, keep it in a safe place.
Very good.
That's awesome.
So, I mean, right now, we've disseminated quite a few. I mean, everything that I had, I've already given out, and so I've already put it in order, and one of the things that came up as we were doing this is to make sure that we have kits that are in Spanish, so that we can also target our Hispanic community. And another initiative that we're going to launch along with this is this can also be used for the elderly. And we know that there are some people, you know, that suffer from dementia, you know, within the community, and I think their family members would probably be appreciative of being a part of this, so we're also going to push that initiative as well.
So.
That was nice.
Mayor Johnson, I have a question. Will parents be able to come to the stations and pick up those brochures?
So, all the precincts have been given these. We did a recent push on these at our Halloween event at Central Precinct, and the Noble members will be going out, you know, around the city and the county, because when the mayor initiated the kickoff, it wasn't just Savannah PD, it was Chatham County, the Sheriff Department, Bryan County, Liberty County. So this is our entire region being involved in this project.
Sounds good. And you said something about the fingerprint? They have to go and get it, or they could just do it on that?
There is a powerless fingerprint pad in here.
Right.
The parents can put the fingerprint on and roll. And I mean, it comes along with the kit, and we had a sponsor to provide these, you know, to us. Southern Company was the sponsor that provided these to us.
I have thirty grandchildren and one great-grand, so I need thirty-one of those kids. Thank you. Yes. Yes.
Good afternoon, council, mayor, city manager.
Good afternoon.
Lady Gunther, chief of police. We were very honored for Noble's leadership to come and meet with us last week, I believe it was the twenty-ninth or so. And the statistics that were brought forth before us were very alarming, and certain statistics stood out to me. Like Major Heron said, on average, a thousand children go missing, reported missing, daily, about three hundred and fifty thousand a year. What stood out even more was that black, Hispanic, and multiracial children make up about sixty percent of all missing children. Even more alarming than that, on the same page, actually, black females ages eleven to twenty-one are four times more likely to go missing than their counterparts. So to bring this awareness to our community and to our local law enforcement was very important for where I stand and where our organization stands. This initiative raises awareness and enhances our resources that are available to law enforcement and the community to not only locate, but to protect what we consider to be a vulnerable community, these vulnerable children. So I think it's a great initiative. We'll pass out some kits and order some more, because I can imagine we'll have an request for many more, so thank you.
Let me thank the chief and also Major Heron. He is our region leader for Noble, for this region. For us, you'd be surprised how many people don't have a recent picture of their child or don't know their child's height or their weight. And so we all see it on social media, we're missing this child, and, you know, it helps in that critical hour to be able to have that identifying information to be able to help. This is free, and I think that's important, no cost to anybody. And as the major said, this is something that you keep. We're not interested in this law enforcement at all. I think the other part is that we'll have some, the order's gone in, we'll have some at City Hall. I'll make sure all of you have access to them as well, and then we'll make sure that our community liaisons that go to these neighborhood meetings will have them as well. The goal is to make sure everyone has one in hand. We have to be able to protect our young people and our old. And as you all know, as a son of a father who passed from Alzheimer's, it is a very difficult time when they decide to walk.
Right.
And you can't stop them.
No.
But having that information might help to identify them quicker, and so it helps police. This is us taking public safety into the public realm. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to add one more thing. If we could possibly look into that, there have been some cases, cold cases, that have been settled because of the plane cards that they put on that. Would y'all be interested in probably doing an initiative where cold cases are placed on plane cards? Just to think about it as another part.
Budget time's coming up, so.
Yes, we want to do that. We want to make sure that we bring attention to the cold cases that are here in Savannah. And that program with putting those pictures on plane cars, because that's what they do in jail, it will pique somebody's interest to maybe giving some information that we can get some of these people off of the streets who have committed these heinous crimes and continue to walk in our community. Thank you so much for what you do. So impressed with that. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Well. So I'm going to ask the other part of my family to come up. Part of a family reunion, my friends from BAPS. Y'all come on up. Give them a round of applause. So we. Excited to have them here. Little, a week or so after my. And the proclamation reasons follows, and excuse my pronunciation, I've been working on it. Whereas BAPS is a worldwide Hindu denomination dedicated to fostering faith, inspiring service, and promoting better living. And whereas His Holiness Pramuk Swami Maharji established the first BAPS Mandir, Hindu Mandir in the United States of America on August the fourth, nineteen seventy-four, in New York City. Flushing, right? Okay, I knew that. Twenty twenty-four marks fifty years of service and faith in the United States for BAPS and the twentieth anniversary of the Mandir in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas over the last fifty years, BAPS has grown to over one hundred two Mandirs across the United States, these Mandirs offer a welcoming and spiritual space for thousands of families, as well as worship, fellowship, communal meals, education activities for the young and old, creating a proper home for the faithful. BAPS Mandirs have a storied history of helping immigrants to the United States retain their connection to their faith, but fully embrace and join in American civic life. And whereas BAPS Mandirs bring His Holiness Maharji's words, "In the joy of others lie out unto life through support for those in need." BAPS Mandirs add to the rich tapestry of diversity that makes America and Savannah, Georgia, a beautiful place to call home. And whereas the BAPS Mandir in Savannah, Georgia is a proud example of how houses of worship contribute to the well-being of their congregants and local communities, the BAPS Mandir in Savannah, Georgia hopes to serve its congregants and the local community with even greater zeal in the next fifty years and beyond. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Van R. Johnson II, mayor of the city of Savannah, to hereby celebrate and commemorate November the seventh as the fiftieth anniversary of BAPS in North America and the twentieth anniversary of BAPS Savannah, Georgia. And witness whereof, I've set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Savannah to be affixed. I had the opportunity several times throughout the year to go hang out, and it's always an amazing time there, and more importantly, these folks before you represent a whole community of good Savanians. When we need them, they're there, and obviously, they are where we are. They go where we go, they do what we do, and so we're glad that you can be one hundred percent Hindu and one hundred percent Savanian at the same time.
That's right.
Congratulations.
Hello, city council.
Hello.
We are truly honored to be here. Thank you for inviting us. This is Sweeney Patel, one of the volunteers through BAPS. And I would also introduce Neil Sharma, and it's Reema Patel and Mila Patel. BAPS Swaminarayan Sanshta is a volunteer-led Hindu organization dedicated to personal growth through spirit, faith, and harmony. Guided by His Holiness Mahan Swami Maharj, BAPS brings Hindu tradition to over one hundred and fifteen North American and three thousand five hundred global communities. With the support from diverse volunteers, contributing millions of hours, it fosters personal development, social progress, and inclusivity. We are humbled for the special occasion this year, as BAPS is celebrating fifty years in North America. Starting off with a small temple in nineteen seventy-four in Flushing, New York. We are also celebrating fifty years of contribution in North America through inspiration of growth, through our gurus, dedication to serving local communities and national causes, Indian culture and tradition, faith and core of human values, through selfless volunteerism and being exemplary citizens, peace and harmony at home with our families. We highly encourage you all to visit na.baps.org.
As Mayor shared, it's also very unique and special for us over here in Savannah, Georgia, to celebrate our twenty years, two decades in Savannah with our temple that was constructed back in two thousand four in November. I was fortunate to be a part of that construction twenty years ago here locally, and Dr. Shabazz, it falls under your district.
Yes, absolutely.
And we were also fortunate, just part of our Diwali celebration, fortunate to see Mr. Commissioner here. We were able to attend the county commission meeting as well for our Diwali and New Year celebration. Our local Mandir, it has an average of four hundred in congregation on a weekly basis on Sundays. When it's large-scale celebrations, it can range anywhere from fifteen hundred to two thousand within our community. Also, we opened a phase-three gymnasium just a few years ago, and we are part of the city of Savannah within that address. While peace can be glimpsed in our lives, it also takes effort to sustain that peace. And we also have a 501(c)(3) affiliate entity, BAPS Charities, which is locally active in the community as well. We have walkathons that happen here annually at Forsyth Park, and these happen in over eighty-five U.S. cities throughout the country. We partnered most recently with the Ronald McDonald House Charities for this initiative that happened in July. BAPS charities, they also take community empowerment, health awareness, educational services, preservation, and. services, preservation, and humanitarian relief during the local disasters that most recently happened and took a devastating impact here, especially Debbie. We did do some relief efforts here locally as well. It's been a great honor to be in great touch with the city and the county both. We've been great friends with Mayor Johnson through the organization and personally prior. And we continue, want to continue this relationship from an organizational level within the municipalities that we fall within, but also invite you guys individually to come to our place of worship for all faiths to see what the Hindu community and the worship is about. Mayor Johnson, thank you once again for the proclamation. We do greatly appreciate that. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So for the last one, and I guess if I don't do this acknowledgement, I guess she can't retire. So maybe we won't do it. Ms. Paula Chrysler, would you please come up?
Yeah.
Mayor and council, ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor to read this into the record for Paula Make the Healthy Choice the Easy Choice Chrysler. So that's the official title. It's into the record now. You can't change it. So whereas Paula Chrysler served as the Director of Healthy Living and Community Development for Healthy Savannah since October 2013, leading this impactful grassroots organization for more than a decade, but has been a volunteer since day one. And whereas, under her leadership, Healthy Savannah, a coalition of more than 200 partners, was awarded a significant grant in 2013 to prevent childhood obesity in Savannah and Chatham County, working closely with the YMCA of Coastal Georgia as the fiscal agent. And whereas Paula Make the Healthy Choice the Easy Choice Chrysler, with the help of community organizations like the YMCA of Coastal Georgia, the Coastal Georgia Indicators Coalition, and many others, led Healthy Savannah, as it was awarded more than $9 million in grant funding for the racial and ethnic approaches to community health grants by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention to seek upstream solutions to challenge public health challenges. And whereas Paula Chrysler assumed a pivotal role as the project lead of this initiative, achieving such significant milestones as passing the complete streets ordinances in Savannah, advocating for the construction of the Truman Linear Park Trail, a five-mile bike and pedestrian path, and increasing community interest in promoting the health of children. And whereas her efforts have helped shape policy, improve infrastructure, and foster a healthier, more engaged community through strategic partnerships, advocacy, and equitable community development initiatives. And whereas, it is fitting that we honor Paula Chrysler upon her retirement and express our deep gratitude for her service and acknowledge the lasting impact and legacy she has left on the city of Savannah and the entire community for her commitment to the health and vitality of Savannah and its residents.
Now therefore, I, Van R. Johnson, the second mayor of the city of Savannah, do hereby salute Paula Chrysler for her innovative and collaborative servant leadership in keeping us all healthy, and we wish you the very best upon your retirement. Ladies and gentlemen, I remember very clearly 2006. We had received the news late one night that Dr. Otis Johnson, who was the mayor at the time, had a heart attack. And we had received news, I got calls from friends that were present, that he had passed away. And it was a very strange time there because we were concerned about him, and he wasn't within our reach. He came back, a much different man. He came back, as you all know him, to be someone very thoughtful and very deliberative. And he wanted to make his legacy about health. And from there, Healthy Savannah was born. And you had to find the healthiest person you can find anywhere in Savannah at the time. And of course, as usually, as it would be, Paula Chrysler always steps up to the plate. And she has been a magnificent advocate for our community in doing better. As a matter of fact, if I'm eating something I should not be, I move away from her. I don't want to be around. In 2010, I remember we were dealing with the dangers of secondhand smoke. And our community, Savannah, and later on, the county, the schools, we became Georgia's first smoke-free community. That is part of the legacy that Paula leaves us, being able to work with people, bring people together and get things done. And so she has been a phenomenal Savanian, and she has decided in a very healthy way to be able to move on and to pass the reins on to someone who is aptly trained and aptly prepared for this moment in time. So it is our pleasure to be able to recognize this great Savanian. I will miss sending her emails with grand opportunities saying, "You want to make some money?" And of course, she always says, "Yes, we could do this." Ladies and gentlemen, let us salute Paula Chrysler.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to keep this short and sweet. As you see, this is a great team here that we have to continue this work. So Mayor, he's been with us since day one, too. You know, just know that. When he was District One, he was everywhere we were, all the time.
Does that help you?
No, you were. And so, and of course, Nick, and everyone here sitting around has been part of this. And I see friends, and Chairman Ellis, and our new city manager still feels like new, maybe a little bit. But anyway, just so grateful for everyone's support through these years. We have done a lot of work. And I have, actually, what I'll do, too, is I'll leave with someone. I have what's called the journey map that has marked at least two things that have happened since 2007. And of course, it starts with Dr. Otis Johnson, because he's the one that did plant the seed. But then we have had some amazing, really significant milestones, Smoke Free Air, the Truman Linear Park Trail tied to town, and what you guys have done to support that has just been amazing. So don't stop now. I'm going to be in the background, but Armon Turner is just going to be doing an awesome job. And with me here, I have our board chair, Blake Caldwell, our breastfeeding program manager, Dr. Elsie Smalls, our nutrition program, Ruby Castro, and food policy council, and you're going to have to help me.
Lita.
The city. But you call her Lita. That'll make it much easier. It's this long name. And then our chair-elect, Dr. Tom Bullock. So thank you for joining here today, and just so grateful for this. I really treasure this and all the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold the woman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Paula Chrysler is a beast. Yeah, she's a beast, right? And she's also a recipient of Woman of Change and Action here in Savannah. It's awesome when you can designate who's going to be your next person, and Armon's a beast, too. So a beast plus beast means success. But I do want to tell you that, you haven't said it's exclaim, but I heard you say, "You know when you retire, when nonprofit directors retire, they become consultants." Isn't that right, Ernie Davis? Thank you for all you do and all the service that you provided to us for many years.
All right. Can I get someone to take a picture of all of us here?
Oh, I got you. I'm going to send them to you.
You got it? Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Jay. Appreciate it.
Hold a minute, hold a minute, Jay.
Oh, here we go. All right.
And the question is, are you going to answer the mayor's emails when he sends you stuff late at night?
Absolutely. Many of you attended the event we had this past weekend, and we had the opportunity to thank Paula for her amazing work. And what was consistent through everyone who spoke was just how marvelous and how awe-inspiring what she's done over these years really is. So I'm honored to be able to hopefully continue her legacy, and I thank you all for your support in there.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and, yeah, go ahead and give that out. I'm going to take something out of context just to help out a friend. Item number 29 is approval of PY, Workforce Innovation Opportunity. Youth provide a subaward in the amount of up to $274,000. That's the one.
Mr. Mayor? 29.
29, Ms. Davis?
Congratulations.
Okay. For delivery of training and support services to low-income youth ages 16 to 24 in Chatham County.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we adopt this agenda item as written.
Second. Properly moved to second at all favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose? Motion passes. Have a good day, Ms. Davis.
Thank you.
All right. So let's get into our alcohol license hearings, items number seven through 10. Any pullouts? Okay, item number seven is approval of a Class G complimentary beer and wine by the drink alcohol license to Saman Dabbat for Joseph's Clothe Years, a clothing store located at 28 West Broad Street in District Two. Item number eight is approval of a Class C beer and wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Mrs. Zen for Etang Dim Sum, a restaurant located at 10 Whittaker Street. Item number nine is approval of a Class E beer and wine by the package alcohol license to Krishna Patel for Residence Inn, a hotel located at 5710 White Bluff Road. Item number 10 is approval of a Class E beer and wine by the package alcohol license to Kuba Hal Dimar for Agitchi Shell, a convenience store located at 3618 Agitchi Road. This is a public hearing. Does anyone have anything against any of these licenses? Going once. Going twice. Speak now, forever hold thy peace.
I ask that we close the hearing.
Properly moved to second at all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number seven, this is Joseph's Clothe Years, 28 West Broad Street. Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I ask that we approve a Class G complimentary beer, wine by the drink alcohol license to Saman Dabbat.
Second. Properly moved to second at all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number eight is Etang Dim Sum at 10 Whittaker Street. Alderman Leggett.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I ask that we approve the Class C beer, wine by the drink alcohol license with Sunday sales to Chin Zen Ten, a restaurant located at 10 Whittaker Street.
Second.
Properly moved to second at all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number nine is for Residence Inn, 5710 White Bluff Road. Alderman Palumbo.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval of a Class E beer, wine by the package alcohol license to Krishna Patel for Residence Inn, a hotel located at 5710 White Bluff Road.
Second.
Properly moved to second at all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number 10 is an alcohol license to Kuba Hal Dimar for Agitchi Shell, a convenience store at 3618 Agitchi Road. Dr. Shabazz.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this agenda item as written.
Second.
Properly moved to second at all favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Yes, ma'am.
Is this in the overlay section?
No, it's not.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to our petitioners. Go be great.
Josie.
All right. Thank you. Item number 11 is a zoning hearing that is, has a corresponding item, number 15, a petition of Joshua Yellen on behalf of Jessica Glenn for Anderson and Waters LLC for a zoning map amendment to rezone .14 acres at 1105 East Anderson Street from TR Traditional Residential Two to Traditional Commercial in Aldermanic District Two. Good to see you, Ms. Mar.
Thank you, you too, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Edward Mar, Director of Development Services at the MPC. Pleasure to see you all today. This is a request by Mr. Yellen for the property at 1105 East Anderson Street to rezone. And the property is currently rezoned TR2, which is a residential designation, and the request is to make it commercial, TC1 in particular. And to kind of look at the future land use map here, we can see that the map already indicates that this is a traditional commercial parcel indicating that we're expecting commercial use of this site at some point in the future. On the zoning map, you can see here that the TC1 zoning already exists just to the left of it there. And so this is to extend that commercial zoning onto this parcel. We anticipate that the two of these will be recombined for the purpose of a mixed-use development at some point in the future, where we would see a small commercial establishment on the first floor and likely some residences on top. So commercial, traditional commercial format there. Just one point that I wanted to make here with regard to this hearing, the neighborhood association that is indicated for this particular parcel does not appear to be active. And so it is that Benjamin Van Clark Park, or at least the person that was indicated as the point of contact, the phone number was not one that enabled us to reach the point of contact, I'm sorry. Long story short, there was not a meeting held because we couldn't get in contact with the neighborhood leader. And so this is a map that is showing you that MPC did mail out these notices so that everybody who is within the mail notice radius was notified that there was a petition to rezone here. And so that's what you're seeing. Just to show you the Sanborns, we can see that going back to 1916, there was a residence, and there is still a residence here. But again, the expectation is that these two parcels are going to be combined, and you'll see something similar, but likely expanded to what you see adjoining that is at the intersection of Waters and Anderson here. With that, MPC staff does recommend approval of this request, and the planning commission concurred. And there's some development standards, just so you can see all the things that are permitted here in this district. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. I do have one comment. Mr. Hunsrocker? Mr. Yellen, we reserve your right to, okay.
Greetings, Council, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity. The planning commission, which advises City Council to all these proposed zoning changes for this and in the next item, number 12, the planning commission has not shown a level of concern or consideration for maintaining historic properties or the character of the proposed neighborhoods such as Eastside, Benjamin Van Clark, or Live Oak. The planning commission has been consistently approving zoning changes or variances that are putting these neighborhoods at risk of losing historic fabric. By changing the zoning for Ms. Glenn in this case, she then has the right to sell the property for more money to the developer willing to tear down this contributing building, placing the building into a landfill, so that a three-to-four-story structure, which is by right of this, any design can be put in its place. Demolition in these neighborhoods has no protections, as you know. Visually compatibility of new structures to a neighborhood is not a requirement. For example, on the same day that Mrs. Glenn's project was approved, this project at 1,001 East 31st Street, which is directly across the lane behind Mrs. Glenn, this project in Live Oak received a variance for height. So the once-two-story building on this site, 1,101 East 31st Street, that was demolished now will be replaced with a four-story extremely modern building devoid of neighborhoods' historic character and scale. I ask that resources be given to respect the city's neighborhoods not yet recognized with protections allotted to historic districts similar to the Victorian and Landmark districts. I recommend continuing these items, number 11 and 12, until the neighborhood associations have a chance to apply. I ask that additional resources be given to Savannah's Preservation Officer to assist with organizing these neighborhoods as they may request. Without recognizing these historic districts at this time, these neighborhoods are subject to much destruction resulting in the loss of continuity and of historic precedent for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick question. So you're contending this is a contributing property? Did you say that?
Yes.
Contributing to what?
To the neighborhood, to the historic integrity of the neighborhood, of the Van Clark neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments on item? Any other comments on item number 11?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
There is motion to close.
Mr. Mayor, move to close the hearing.
Second.
Second.
Properly moved to second at all, favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Alderman?
Yeah, this is from Mr. Morrow. Mr. Morrow, is there any historical significance to 1105 that you know of?
If I could get to the internet, I would gladly pull it up to, pull it up for you very quickly. I do not believe that either of these structures are contributing, however.
Okay, so you mentioned that there is no neighborhood association, and so are we always basing, I know that's a contributing factor, but are we canvassing that community to see if in fact there are people who, like Mr. James, who want to not have things like this happen in their community?
So typically-
I know you do the public hearings and all of those, but how do we, because I think from what he's saying, I need to get some clear information on who exactly is supposed to be protecting our historical buildings before they get here. Is it the Savannah Historic Foundation, or the Preservation, or MPC? And do you not, when this, I know they're separate entities, but when this stuff comes before us, does that mean that everybody has a part in knowing what's going on when it comes to this? Are we not just, even if the Savannah Historic Foundation doesn't come in, do they, are they privy to this information that's mailed to them directly, not what they hear or see because of word amount? Is this something that you formally, is that a process?
So I'm gonna find my brain in a second.
Yes, sir.
This is not in a district.
And I'm sorry to throw all that out, okay?
No, 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 I'm so sorry. This is not in a district, so let me backtrack for a second and say, we have local historic districts that have standards, and so basically, if you're gonna demolish something that is within one of those districts and has been deemed to be contributing, you have to go through the COA process in order to be able to demolish it. This is not within one of those districts.
And that is my point. If it's not in the designated historic areas, but they have some historic bearings to our community, how do you identify those when it comes before us?
Well, beyond the local, there are designation processes at the national level as well, and so we have areas that are designated nationally as landmarks, and we often will work to bring those into some sort of a local protection, in essence. So working with historic preservation, actually, the Historic Preservation Director from the MPC and Jessica from the city, kind of our dual historic preservation folks, they are working actively to bring structures and areas like Kensington Park into local protections where we deem that that's a priority for us.
Yes, sir, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Quick question. So could this, could this property be rezoned with the provision that it's not demolished? Can the council institute a protection?
Mr. Mayor?
Wait, wait a second. I'm just looking at, the attorney is looking at me real crazy.
So not without the opportunity for the property owner to have an opportunity to be heard on that subject.
Okay.
Because it would constitute a taking.
Taking, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that property is already down. It was a property that was falling down, and he already cleared the lane.
Can you go back, please?
Absolutely.
It looked like it's still up.
Yeah, yeah.
Not behind that.
The yellow?
It's behind the yellow.
The yellow property is down?
The yellow property is still there, but the property, the second part of that property is in the back, has already been knocked down.
Right, I'm talking about the yellow property.
Mayor Johnson.
This is a Google Street View image. It's not a recent image. It's in my recollection that that property is still standing.
Yeah, that, but the backside of it, that's attached to that property has already been demolished.
Okay. Alderman Miller-Blakely?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Mr. Morrow, what year were both of those buildings constructed?
Unfortunately, I do not have that particular information. What you're seeing here is the Sanborns. I know that this is an early 1900s structure.
1105.
And so you can see here on the 1916 Sanborn, this is a similarly situated dwelling on the property, so it is likely the same dwelling.
Say that again? I was-
The house that we're seeing here in the picture is an early 1900s home, according to the tax assessor, and so what we're seeing from 1916 Sanborns is that this is likely the same structure, maybe-
So it's the 1900s, early 1900s?
Yes, ma'am.
So that does make it historical.
Potentially.
It's just not registered. It just hasn't gone through the process. Now Kensington, last City Council, they did a conservation permit where you can't go in there and demolish anything with them. And what I'm finding is, in our marginalized communities and our African-American communities, you're seeing four or five stories. I ride down Anderson Street, and I see where SCAD has put in four stories of buildings where it's taken away the landscape. I mean, you could ride down and you see the sun, you see the trees. We don't have that anymore. And it seems like now they did everything they want to do over on the west side, now they coming over to the east side. Next it'll be the south side, then everything will be, instead of it being Savannah, it would be SCADvanna, and that's not what we want.
1930.
1930, wow. Okay, so I just wanted to know when it was constructed, and we good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Palumbo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Morrow, thank you for your presentation. We've had one of the speakers come and throw around the word, you know, contributing structures and others, and, but help us, let's get to the bottom of the issue at hand, because what's in front of us is a rezoning. It's not a demolition request, correct?
Right.
Okay, so we're not evaluating a demolition request, we're evaluating a rezoning. So demolition would be speculative at this point?
Absolutely.
Yes, okay. So is this particular parcel within a district on the National Register of Historic Places?
Unfortunately, I do not have that information with me right now.
It's not.
Well, in that case, I mean, it is healthy speculation, but we can't speculate on whether or not a structure is contributing or non-contributing. There are so many factors to consider, and even when the National Historic District has not been identified or defined, it's really tough. But at least for the item that's in front of us today, we understand that it aligns, does it align with a future land use map?
It does.
And does it receive MPC's recommendation?
It does, yes, sir.
And this has received recommendation for approval from the MPC Commission?
That is correct, both.
Thank you.
Thank you. But speculation has to be considered in being able to weigh the impacts of what you do. I mean, the fact is, when you change zoning, you change land use, you know, there are ramifications. So although it may, you know, we're talking about a property here is 100, 180 years old easily, just from the Sanborn map speculating. So I just, I mean, I think Alderman Palumbo is right, but I think we have to also consider the wide range of things that could happen to it. So, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, looking at this land use map and this map in 1105 Anderson Street, I believe that is in a neighborhood that has an association. It's either the Eastside Coalition or the Benjamin Van Clark.
It's the Ben Van Clark. I just told, gave the number to both of them.
And so we want to make sure we do our due diligence. When we say there is no association community that's tied to these things, we want to make sure that we do our due diligence in making sure that they are, because that is in one of those neighborhood association areas.
Maybe we should continue this until they can figure it out.
Absolutely. If I could, I just want to note, I personally attempted, I misspoke. I did not mean that there's no neighborhood. I simply meant we were unable to contact the point of contact on open neighborhoods.
Yes, sir.
I personally called the number, and it was-
I understand. He changed his number. Actually, Mr. Hunsucker is the neighborhood president also, and he's gonna reach out to him also, but within those two, that neighborhood is Live Oak Neighborhood, which is Mrs. Johnson, and also Ben Van Clark is Timothy Burgess.
Okay.
So I'll make sure you have both of their information before we leave.
Sure.
So, Mr. Yellen, I mean, you can talk now, or, I think I have a feeling how this is gonna go. You wanna do it now?
Well, I will talk to answer the hypothetical question that I think is going to be asked. I did reach out also to Mr. Burgess. We never received a response, understanding Alderman Leggett has a new phone number for him. We are happy to meet with the neighborhood association to go out and come back in two weeks. We were not trying to get this slipped by. We had reached out, we had reached out both to Live Oak on the number and email listed, and to Benjamin Van Clark Neighborhood Association on the number and email listed. We just didn't receive any contact back.
I'll set the meeting up and location and make sure that we all are there, Mr. Mayor.
Understood, thank you.
What do y'all think would be reasonable?
We will definitely be back in two weeks.
Okay. Is there a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor, I ask that we continue this item with the continuing item for two weeks.
Second.
Properly moved to second that we continue this hearing for two, oh, the hearing has been closed, we'll continue this action for two weeks.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's right, it's three weeks, that's right, too. The Tuesday meeting, what date is that, date certain? November 25?
I think it was a night.
26, all right, November 26. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Yes, sir.
Item number 12, thank you. Item number 12 is a joint petition of Bridget Liddy on behalf of the mayor and Alderman of the City of Savannah and Brianna Paxton for a zoning text amendment to Section 3.12 Special Exemptions, 3.21 Variances, and 5.4 Principal Use Table 5.9 Traditional Residential Districts, 5.12 Traditional Neighborhood Districts, 5.13 Traditional Districts, 8.1 Residential Use Standards for Limited and Special Uses.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. Mayor, so in combination, each of these seven targeted text amendments are made or requested in support of the establishment of more affordable housing development within the City of Savannah. And so each of these particular sections receives small treatments in order to make this possible. And so it's a proud day for a planner when we can stand at the podium and see something that began as a plan cross the finish line, in essence. And so what we're seeing here, just to point back to this July 2021 Housing Savannah Action Plan, and when you look on the right side of your screen, this is the work program, and you can see that many of these text amendments are almost like a to-do list as you go down, and this is from that work program. So anytime you see a work program come through, this is the objective many times, to see that day where it crosses the finish line and it, you know, affects ways change in the community. So, in essence, this is a program that was put forth by Ms. Brianna Paxton and the City of Savannah jointly. We spent a lot of time talking about how best to sort of resolve this issue of what ultimately was allowing small reductions in the minimum lot area per dwelling unit required. And that was, again, to allow the development of parcels where often there would be a little bit more land, or they would be just short of what was required in order to have an additional unit, but it wasn't there. And so if we attach this idea that this is going to be covenanted affordable housing, we found that as a basis to support minor reductions in the lot area required. And so there are two components to the program. The first managed by the city's Housing Services Department, which qualifies the projects, qualifies the occupants, and maintains ongoing compliance. And then the second portion is that these projects are sent over to the Planning Commission to evaluate the projects against the special exception criteria that are included within the text amendment. So we'll be looking at public benefit, we'll be looking at the compatibility of the proposal with the receiving neighborhood, and the adequacy of public facilities to accommodate the proposal. And so after that review, then you are on your way to getting a density bonus. So, there are four key things that I just pointed out that this accomplishes. It permits reduction in lot area per unit, and a relaxation of other standards like setbacks, lot coverage, things of that nature, in order to permit affordable housing. It applies to a group of districts that are traditional in nature, traditional residential, traditional neighborhood, and traditional commercial. And it has two routes to provide the small density bonus, first by right. And again, these are very small increases, and where you would have something that was a little bit larger, there is a special exception provision where the MPC would review those projects. And so just to point out, this is our current use table. The T districts are those where, at a minimum on the low end, you're already talking about the potential to have a two-family situation. So these are districts where you would ordinarily find not only single-family homes, but also duplexes at a minimum. And moving up toward the right, you would see the ability to add additional dwelling units on a given lot, simply by adding more land. So in essence, if you are able to take what you have, and you're missing just a little bit, if you're able to get a little bit from a neighbor, or acquire the property next door and bring it into the scope, doesn't require rezoning, you get more units simply by amassing more land. So these are naturally areas where you're going to see multiple units potentially per lot, and not single-family explicitly. This is a significant map, so I guess touching briefly on what we just spoke about, there are our established districts here, both local and conservation in nature, where we have design standards that apply, and then also conservation where we're talking about prohibitions on demolition. Much of the colored area that you see here is within one of those districts. And so if you're inside of those black lines, that means that there is either a COA, well, most of it is COA, but there are some, just a little bit, some conservation districts. Most of it would require a COA. There are portions, however, that are not within these districts, and so for those, we do have some added conditions for this. But basically, everything that has either that blue, green, or kind of that purple color, these are the districts that are affected by these changes. And so ultimately, we are very proud of the work that went into this between the city and Ms. Paxton, and all that contributed to it. And so MPC and the Commission both agreed that this is a good step forward, recommending approval with these four programmatic elements that should come forward, one of which actually is on today's agenda. Back to the Planning Commission to help them in making good decisions about how it is that we implement this program. So the first is the definition of affordable housing, and that's the one that will be dealt with later on this agenda. A defined period of affordability, nomination of an ombudsman, and a documented explanation of the intended mechanism for ongoing compliance monitoring. And finally, delineation and establishment of an infill development boundary, so that we're not seeing zonings that are outside of what is presently there, simply for the purpose of adding density where it may not necessarily be appropriate, or where infrastructure is inadequate to handle it. There were a couple of other recommendations on a longer-term basis that staff is recommending, just to kind of round out the program. The first, contextual guidelines for missing middle housing typologies, such as a pre-approved plan, book, or design manual. And so one that was shared with us, that's a great example, is from South Bend, Indiana. You can see there are some forms that are identified, and it kind of shows how you can create a housing typology that will fit within a receiving neighborhood that looks like what's already there, so you're not getting something that's completely new and unexpected. The second one being occupancy standards, to ensure that the incentivized housing actually is geared toward the population that needs it most, and those particularly align with Georgia's Department of Community Affairs standards in that regard. And so with that, again, MPC staff and the Planning Commission recommend approval with those first four items returning to the Planning Commission within 180 days. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. We do have two cards for comment. First, I assume-
Three.
I have, I have, okay, thank you, three, thank you. Reverend Chester Ellis, I'm assuming he's coming as President Ellis?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, citizens of Savannah. I came today to ask you to put this on hold, all right? Now, they can't use the excuse they can't get in touch with me. I've got three phones that they can call. I've got three emails that they can. And Bridget, and all the members of your staff, they know how to get me 24/7, even if I'm out of the city. This came up that asked me to alter my schedule and come and talk and ask you to stop this where it is, because if you don't, we see the same thing happen that's already happened to us. And let me tell you what I'm talking about. There was a variance in a zone change given to the folks who used to own Savannah Marine Terminal, which was supposed to be on the corner of Bagagene and Feeling. Two-thirds of Colonial, the last quarters, gone. Now it's a container field, less than 50 yards outside my front door.
Come on.
You stand on my house and look to the north, there are six stacked containers- You stand on my house and look to the north, there are six stacked containers outside my door. But the variance was given, and the changes were given back on Philly Avenue and Magazine. You can't see Philly Avenue and Magazine from my house. Listen, y'all. Folks at the MPC, the first problem they have is they Google. When you Google, you don't get Carver Village. You get Carver Heights.
Right.
And according to the state of Georgia, there is no such place in the state of Georgia as Carver Heights.
That's right.
I have asked Ms. Lydie and her staff, I've talked to the manager before, the manager now, to make sure that we get that stuff straight. There is no Carver Heights. Carver Village has a historic place in the historic register. And now what we have is a container field outside our door.
Come on.
They come in here with this fluff. It looks good. It smell good, but it's still a skunk.
That's right.
And so I ask you all, send this back to MPC and planning and everybody else. Now, everybody knows, as president of Historic Carver Village Neighborhood Association and the CEO, they can call me an hour before meeting and they get on the agenda. This has never been to us. We have never had a word of this spoken in a Carver Village meeting. They know I won't even call a special meeting. And I can gather them up in a hurry. So I'm asking city council, y'all put a stop to this right now. Make sure y'all get this straight, all right? Because all this is gonna do is create it that historic places will leave. There are some places on the west side where housing could be built, all right, to fit the surrounding area so you couldn't tell the new from the old.
That's right.
It can be done. But one of our main problems is, and I live in one of the houses that was bought in 1949 by my mother-in-law. We remodeled in 1990. It was built by CNX Railroad. This property was owned by CNX. CNX then leased it to folk, and they leased it and allowed them, and they come before y'all with variance. And if you go down there now, when you get to Philly and Magazine, you wonder what the heck's going on
Right.
on the right-hand corner, on the eastern corner of Philly and Magazine. And then when you look on the left, what used to be a thriving neighborhood, a lot of us know it in our days as old Mexico.
Mexico.
But it's Collat's quarters. That's what it is. Collat's quarters, Brickyard, Waterworks, Springfield Terrace, and Carver Village are all connected, all came out of Pearl Smith School, which you know for yourself. Pearl Smith Property has been declared a historic district.
That's right.
And it's a historic property. We are working with staff right now to create that you all have a grant, to do some things about creating the museum and thing we trying to put there.
Yes, sir.
But under the cloak of this kind of mess, there is stuff being torn down that should not be torn down, variance being given. And let me tell you how they play the shell game with you. One person will come up here, and they say they're the owner, all right, just like Savannah Marine Terminal. It don't exist no more. There's another name to it. And that thing has stretched from Philly and Magazine all the way around on the north side of Carver Village.
That's right.
Covering up Stoke Street, covering up Pitt Street, covering up Sheffield. And now it's out on the corner of Collat Avenue and West Gwinnett Street. We had to come before the MPC and get them to stop the trucks from coming out there and coming using the thoroughfare to get to the shortcut. And then putting, so I ask you all, stop this while it's being done. I understand the work that's been done, but listen, work is nothing. We started in January of 2011, did not get the county and city designation in 2012, did not get the state designation until 2018, and did not get the national designation until 2019. So when you come up with this instant, it's like the old coffee. Grandma used to brew coffee in the pot, and you could smell it three miles away. Now, all you do is drop water in the coffee pot, and it's done. Please stop this stuff beforehand. I heard the gentleman speak about how it's infecting their neighborhood. Our neighborhood is infected, and it's being overrun because things like this get by. I got the call this morning. I altered my schedule so I can come here and ask y'all, please, send this back to your staff, send this back to the planning people, send it back to MPC, and stop them from looking on Google and coming up with stuff that don't apply.
Come on.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Need to see our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Question though, this for Mr. Morrow. But Carver Village wouldn't be involved because the zoning, it's not even affected, right?
No effect.
Because the zoning would not support the density bonus.
But it's right outside the door.
I mean, but I want to make sure that he, we're clear about this, that Carver Village is not a part of, okay, all right. Thank you.
Zone residential, single-family.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Isaacs?
I had a question.
All right, well, let's, let's, let's get.
Hello, hello. Ellie Isaacs, Director of Preservation for Historic Savannah Foundation. The Historic Savannah Foundation is supportive of the proposed text amendment to create a density bonus for affordable housing. Conversations about historic preservation and affordable housing often take place in filos, when in reality, both issues are deeply connected. The housing, the middle housing typology is consistent with several neighborhood development patterns, and would be compatible infill development that would assist in addressing our housing crisis. We look forward to further collaboration and review of the final specific programmatic elements to ensure that they are based in equity and affordability to create housing that is accessible for local residents. Additionally, we want to thank author Brianna Paxton for her research and thorough analysis to propose this amendment, and for city and MPC staff on their collaboration. It's important to remember that when we save houses and encourage compatible infill to be constructed, we also preserve neighborhoods and intern communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hansrucker?
Hello, my name is Jim Hansrucker. I would just like to reiterate the TC2 zoned areas, the green areas. Those areas are being, the lawyers come in and they convince people that they can, they can buy, okay, TC2 is three stories up to 45 feet.
Right.
And what happens is, they get granted four stories. They say they can do it in 45 feet, but then they ask for maybe another five feet. So instead of what you see here before you as TC2, three stories, 45 feet, it turns out to be a four-story building that dwarfs the neighborhood around it. So that is what is going on with this. They might be giving you, it looks good. I mean, it really does look good. I appreciate all the time and effort that's gone into it. But that is what else is going on behind the scenes. The intersection of East Gwinnett and East Broad Street, those two areas are now going to be four-story buildings. It's TC2. This area that we spoke about earlier in the previous case, that is going to be four stories on 31st Street. That is a four-story building. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Quick question. So when he's saying, and Ms. Hansrucker's allegation is essentially that we approve four stories, 45 feet, and it becomes four stories, 50 feet. I mean, where does that approval come from, and how is that applied in terms of what had been approved?
Okay. So thank you, Mr. Hansrucker, for bringing up that point. We're talking about at the MPC or the ZBA, you will have variances for site plan-related standards, right? And so within the TC2 zoning district, you're talking three stories not to exceed 45 feet. So if, when we are considering giving someone a little bit of flexibility in developing something of this nature, they are typically going to exceed whatever the maximum floor area is. They're going to need a little bit of additional height, depending on what the nature of kind of the surrounding development is. Sometimes you want a pitched roof rather than a flat roof or something of that nature. And so it's these kind of nuances where we decide, where are we going to trade off on standards versus kind of achieving some sort of a public benefit, right? So again, this is that call, I'm gonna go back to the conditions, contextual guidelines, right? The idea is that obviously, every site is going to be a little bit different. Every receiving neighborhood is a little bit different. And so we don't want forms introduced in our neighborhoods that are inconsistent with the types of development that we already see there. Generally speaking, you're not gonna see anything different. You ride by many areas in Savannah, and you have two-family dwellings, four-family dwellings, right in the midst of single-family homes. And they're not obnoxious. They don't stand out. They don't cause any alarm. And the idea is that these things are currently not permissible. We want to enable them again, right? And so if we take this particular first step and then add on to that, these things that we're calling for in the red box, you could actually have guidelines that would say, okay, we're never going to allow this here. We are always going to keep this in this particular area, you know, under this certain amount when you're next to, you have the ability to customize it. This is a first step, and these are some additional action items that with a little bit of modification, this can really become a Savannah-specific program that enables things to be built today that are no longer allowed, but they're on the ground. They've been there, you know, since the early 1900s, many of them.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion regarding this hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I was just gonna make a motion that we close and have a question.
Properly moved in second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Ladies and gentlemen, let me tell you this, and then we'll, we'll get into it. However, I mean, I think we should always intentionally, exhaustively communicate. It doesn't hurt to be able to do that. We want people to be very clear about what it is we're trying to do. On the other end of it, we have charged our city manager and Team Savannah to come up with affordable option ways, because every single one of us has screamed about housing affordability. We have asked for him to come up with a toolkit of varying mechanisms by which we can achieve affordability citywide. And so this is part of what he has done, also blessed by our Housing Savannah Task Force. So I just want to make sure we're very, very clear. While we should communicate, the longer it takes for us to achieve what we're trying to achieve, the longer it takes for us to reach the affordability that we're trying to reach. And I want to make sure that we're not gigging Team Savannah for something that we can't seem to make a decision on. So I just want to make sure we're clear with that. So we'll go ahead. Go ahead, Dr. Shabazz.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Paxton was at our city council meeting and did the presentation. And since that time, one of my neighborhoods, which is Can Park, Jackson Park, was, was mentioned as one of those neighborhoods that was talked about in reference to a density bonus for affordable housing, text amendment for the city of Savannah. So what has happened is that I have gotten feedback from that neighborhood wholeheartedly and just a ray of, of letters and texts and, and asking me that Can Jackson Park would not, well, they wanted to have a conversation with Ms. Paxton, but she, she did not meet with them. And the residents of Can Park and Jackson Park wholeheartedly do not want small-scale duplexes and triplexes, quadplexes units to be built in the neighborhoods, in their neighborhood. They would like to not, they don't want to change the standard of what is already there. And they're asking me that this amendment to, to, to vote against this in reference to Can Jackson Park in the fifth district. That's the only neighborhood that was on that list that was presented at our last city council meeting. And my folks are, are at uproar with this. So I needed to, to make that statement. And, you know, I am for affordable housing. I am for creating the variances and whatever it needs, we need to do to build affordable housing. But we are talking, I've heard from my constituents, the voice that I carry to city council. And with them being a part of it, they are a very, very established community, and there may be a few properties and lots, and maybe some houses that need to be torn down and rebuilt. But they are not for having the plexes, the quadplexes, triplexes, duplexes that will take away the character of Can Park and Jackson Park.
Thank you.
If I could.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out a couple of things that I think are salient, extremely relevant to this discussion, because we've entered into unusual territory where we've, we've found ourselves in the middle of the MPC city staff, but we've forgotten about the most important thing here, is that this is an individual resident of our city, an extraordinary resident that has brought this petition forward to us. Now, in the meantime, people got excited about it. The city of Savannah got excited about it. The MPC got excited about it. But I don't want us to lose sight that this is one resident's petition, or an extraordinary resident who spotted a lot, an open lot, an empty lot, and wanted to build a home for someone to live in. And she wanted to build an affordable housing unit for someone to live in. And she researched in the Sanborn maps that there used to be a duplex there. And she wanted to build that duplex. And the city of Savannah, or the MPC, or Garden Country, whoever it was, said that you can't do it under this current code. So she took it upon herself to fix it. She put her money down. She put it on the table. She put it on the line. And she actually stood toe-to-toe with city staff and delivered a workshop. So I don't want us to confuse this resident's petition for city staff or where this is coming from. And maybe it grew legs and went out of control. I'm not sure. But I do know that we have to re-legalize those pieces of missing middle housing that were once there. I also know that we're not gonna get out of the shortage by kicking the can and passing the buck. And I know it's uncomfortable, but change is inevitable. And we can choose to change by chance, or we can change by choice. And all of those housing units that we're in a shortage of right now, whether it be 10,000, 20,000, or however they may be, this council gets to choose how they're built. They can be built in the old, traditional way, which I think is what is in front of us today, or we can build towers to the sky to fulfill that shortage. They're gonna, those applications are gonna keep coming here until the market is satisfied with the amount of housing that we need.
That's true.
I think this is a healthy point. The only amendments that I would like to make is I wish that it could be more in the fourth district. And if council decides to pass on this, I invite the petitioner, come and work with me. I will find neighborhoods for you here in my district, and we'll work together and we'll make it happen, because I'm not gonna miss this opportunity and the ability to build more human-scaled adequate density to help fill our city out. And we know that in the 1940s, whoever the city council was, they started botching and butchering our zoning code in a manner that we're living with this housing shortage today. And I think that we have a duty and a moral imperative to fix it. How it's done, I think we do need to work on communication. I do think we need to work on outreach to make sure that people understand exactly what it is. But at the heart of it, in examining this one, I think it's a good one. I have more questions about the programmatic capabilities. I want to make sure that we don't try to throw everything in the kitchen sink into one person's petition. And the most important thing today is that we need to keep in mind the original petition and the petitioner, that she sought out, that she wanted to do the right thing. And whatever we do here today, I want to make sure that she gets what she needed out of this process, and that she can build that duplex and find a way to build affordable housing units on that site, just like she wanted to do.
Thank you. All the, thank, all the woman, Bell?
If I understand correctly.
Talk into the mic, please.
If I understand correctly, Commissioner Ellis was just asking that.
Chairman, President, President Ellis.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. You're not, you're president of the Neighborhood Association today. But you were just asking that we delay a decision until you can learn more, your, your Neighborhood Association learn more. I just wanted to clarify that, make sure that we understood what he was asking.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. All the women.
Okay. Ms. Paxton stepped up as a citizen and presented that petition. And, and that's great. That's what our citizens should do. I wish we could get more citizens to put in that much energy. I wish we could get more citizens to put in that much energy. And I hope she can get that, what she's trying to do there. But what we have to be careful of is the one-size-fits-all, because that would work where she wants it doesn't necessarily mean that it will work even in the T District in some other area like Carver Village. I think we're going to have to be very surgical. We need to do this in a lot of places. And it's so interesting to hear your argument about being able to replace or re-establish housing that's on the ground, because that was my argument at the last meeting, and y'all disagreed with it. That was my argument about the people who have been sending me here for the last eight years, trying to get the legality of the duplexes back in the area where they had been for decades, and I didn't get any support. But you all are using that very same argument today by re-establishing what's already the pattern on the ground. So now, what you're trying to place these in places where they're not being accepted, I had to reach out, because when I heard this at the last council meeting, this was my first time hearing it, how is this impacting neighborhoods in my district, and that's my first time hearing it when it's being presented at council meeting, that's unacceptable. And so I had to contact the leadership in the neighborhoods in the 1st, and I spent a couple of days trying to get in contact with Ms. Williams. We spoke this morning, she couldn't be here, she wanted to be here, because she said she was familiar with it. I think Ms. Paxton had reached out to her, but she said they were very much against it in Cala Brownsville, that's the president of Cala Brownsville, and I also spoke with Ms. Nida on her board. And they do not like what's being presented, and they do not want it in Cala Brownsville. So I called the president in Carver, and they're the same way. Now, when we asked at the last meeting, the name of the neighborhoods that would be impacted, Carver Heights came up, so therefore I had to call over to Carver Village to find out, are you all familiar with this? Because you might be familiar with it, because I'm not. And they weren't on board with this. So one thing about Mayor Otis Johnson, he was the guy who made sure that staff did not make these kind of moves and the city did not without the residents being involved. He made sure that staff went into these communities and met with, he would not even entertain certain things when it came before him, because they had not gone out to the people that they worked for. And so we're regressing on that, and we're making these decisions down here that's going to impact everyone all over, and they don't fit everywhere. So we're going to have to look at this thing a little bit more uniquely, more keenly. Even the folks in Can Park reached out and said the same thing, they weren't interested in this, and they did not like it. And then I had a question about, we talked about in our legislative agenda, home rule. We understand that concept, because we don't feel like people at the state level in Atlanta should be making decisions for us here in Savannah or any other locality. And that makes sense. But here on this, in the county, in the city here, we should have that same type of fervor. We should not want to mix all these decisions for people in neighborhoods, and they're not being a part of making that decisions. We want to be top-down and make these changes. And when I spoke to several leaders in the 1st District, even over in Cala Brownsville, they said this, they said, all of these people who are coming with these great ideas and making these recommendations, none of them are from here. That's what they said to me, and I thought about it. They said, the ones on the MPC, the ones on the council, all of them who are making the decisions for all of these massive changes, they're not from here. So they don't know how the culture and what it feels like to have people been in communities for 150 years and so forth and so on, and have, you know, come y'all, come y'all folks, come here, and want to change the nature of these communities. We're going to have to look at this, because what might work in TC in town may not work in TC in one of the concentric neighborhoods. And lastly, who's going to police if we pass this and that duplex or that other unit is supposed to be affordable? And who on staff is going to be the person keeping up what rent is being charged and whether that unit is affordable? And somebody just moved last week, and are we going to make sure that the new rent is affordable? How are we going to police all of this? So my recommendation today, and what I'm going to be asking, first of all, I think the people who live in these neighborhoods need to be involved in the conversation. So I think we need to postpone, and I know that requires a certain date, and I don't know how much time staff would need to get all of these people in the room, whether they would do one meeting and pull in these neighborhoods or meet individually, but maybe a month, and I don't have the calendar in front of me.
It would be December 19th if you were looking for a month out.
And I would recommend that, but I can't say whether they'll be able to meet that.
Right, we're not at that point yet, so, thank you.
Mayor Johnson.
I think it was Alderwoman Wilderbri.
Yes, sir, just have a couple of questions and a statement. First of all, Mr. Morrow, I'd like to thank you and Ms. Paxton for all the hard work that you do. And I want to ask you a question, and I'm not being facetious, but who are you employed by?
Is that a personal question?
No, I think that's for public record.
Metropolitan Planning Commission.
But it is a county entity, is that not correct?
That is correct.
And so in your official capacity, have you ever seen anything of this nature come on the agenda in this particular piece?
I'm sorry, could you restate the question?
Okay, what I'm saying is because, and it's no disrespect to the sitting president, who is also the chairman of the commissioner who you work for. And so, to me, it behooves us that we work in tandem, and that's not happening. We have a president who spoke in front of us, who has a lot of juice, he's a chairman. And yet, y'all two can't get together to decide how a piece should actually work before it came to us. And that's why I asked you who you work for. And so when we have these kind of things that happen, I know and I appreciate intergovernment agency agreements, and I don't see how this information did not fall in the hands of the chairman and the president, who he is intrinsically involved, I mean, it's the neighborhood where he polices as a resident, and yet y'all stand before us to tell us what we should be doing. And I am in agreement that these type of things, I try to beat them down when they come in my district, and I believe the alderman from that district has already said that we really need to put some more teeth into this. But, Mr. President, that's how I'll address you, because that's how you came up. And this is for Mr. President Ellis, something this close to heart, sir, should not only be on our agenda, it should also be on the county's agenda. And that's why I asked you, in your stead, have you ever represented this piece that's so important to all of us, not only in this district? And that is why he said about Carver Heights. Carver Heights is moot, because it does not exist. But we know that this text amendment does not affect Carver Village, is that correct?
The zoning districts that are within that area are single-family.
This particular text amendment that we're speaking about right now today, does it impact Carver Village? So we have the horses already out the gate, and we're trying to corral them, and that is why, again, I say that we have to do better, the county and the city, when we meet to have these things, and not to just show up in front of us to kind of beat us up, to tell us and suggest what we should do when you're not suggesting that it should be done on your end.
Alderwoman, let me make sure, I need to make some bringing clarity to this. The Metropolitan Planning Commission is an independent planning organization whose major customers are the city of Savannah and Chatham County. The MPC does not work for Mr. Ellis, nor does it work for me. Their customers are the city of Savannah and the county of Chatham. In this case, they are the planning organization or the planning experts for the city of Savannah. So Mr. Ellis was, Reverend Ellis was correct in coming up as a citizen, because he would not necessarily have been privy of this prior to it coming on MPC. He would not be naturally notified in his other capacity. He's coming up as a citizen, and if they did not communicate with his Neighborhood Association, as we would expect, I think he should have every right to come and say, hey, y'all should communicate with us.
Mr. Mayor.
One second. So again, let's go back to where it is. We've charged the city manager to deal and come up with means for us to achieve housing affordability. That's what we've asked him to do. He has done that. And this has kind of come through the process and it's coming to us. Now, ultimately, no one, and it's called NIMBY, not in my backyard, no one wants to have these things in there, you know, because it's always, you know, have it, do it in somebody else's space and not ours. The question before us is, if we feel that there is more communication, and I think we should, then let's do that and charge that those conversations are held. But I will tell you from experience that the conversations which should be had will not change a yield, a difference of opinion as it relates to this. Ultimately, council, as the individuals who are charged to make these decisions, you're just going to have to decide if you want housing affordability, and all the contemporary data says that you achieve affordability by density. Either you do it, or you don't. And if you don't, then that's fine, we take that off of his plate and we move on to something else. So I just want to make sure that we're very clear about where we are back and forth with this. I mean, you know, we just have to make a decision, pick a road and go down. If Alderwoman Lanier had mentioned it earlier to President Ellis's question, I mean, you know, if people are not communicated with, then yeah, we should create a means or mechanism to be able to communicate with people and help them understand what it is we're trying to do. Because some of those folks are the same folks that are complaining back to you about the fact that housing here is not affordable. So you've already spoken, Alderwoman.
I've not spoken.
No, I'm talking to Alderwoman.
No, sir, but I wanted to clarify what you said. Mr. Ellis is, I have much respect for him, and I'm not suggesting that he should not be here, I'm just suggesting that he has juice, you know, a lot of juice. And as a president, we look to the presidents that fall under our jurisdiction to make sure, even before things come before us, that they voice an opinion that they need to get in front of us. And that was my point, that was no disrespect to him, thank you.
We need to make some decisions, move on. Alderwoman Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Mr. Morrow, could you please go back to the map right there? And now, could you please go back to the construction of the houses?
Um...
Right there. Now, go back to that map. Cala Brownsville and that area that you all have designated to change these zonings, is there someplace else in the city that this can be done? And why was this area picked? Is it because the houses there are not as expensive as other places in Savannah? What made you all decide to go with the Carver Village, Cala Brownsville, Victorian Historic District?
Carver Village is not in part of that, it's part of it.
Well, I'm looking at what's here on the map, so...
It's not included. Go ahead.
Okay, well, we all know eventually, this area is being gentrified at an alarming rate, and I'm just trying to figure out what made you all decide to pick this particular area?
Well, in approaching anything, you want to find a systematic route. And so we identified zoning districts that were appropriate for including, and actually, I should step back and say, many of these zoning districts are Savannah-specific. When you look at the T Districts, they all represent in-town neighborhoods that have been in development, some of them for in excess of 100 years easily. And so they reflect very ingrained development patterns. And so zoning really is, if you could imagine, if you break a leg and you get a cast and you put it around, it's scaffolding, in a sense. So it's defining envelopes and telling you where things should go without necessarily telling you what they should look like. And so those traditional districts, each and every one of them represents what has been going on in Savannah in that chosen area for a period of time. And so it was not on the basis necessarily of the cost of the houses or anything of that nature, it was purely based on the fact that...
Is it possible that you could go, because Alderwoman, I mean, I'm sorry, Alderman Palumbo said that you could find something possibly like that in the 4th District or the 6th District? Is it possible that you could go into those areas and find something?
At your request.
A location where you could do something like this?
At your request, absolutely. As staff, generally speaking, I think we all look for the least bias in the things that we do. And so we chose generically all of these districts. And to be perfectly candid with you, I have conversations with many people seeking to develop, I probably would have looked for a path for residential, single-family that would have been even an additional set of conditions other than this. So we recognize these are fully nuanced, and if the desire, even though all of the public notice requirements were met, if the desire is to go neighborhood by neighborhood, it would be a longer and more protracted process. But absolutely, we are here ultimately to serve the people.
Right, because what you're hearing, coming from the two Alderwomen in the 1st and the 5th District, is that their constituents, you know, they don't want this in their neighborhood, and it's not a matter of NIMBY, it's a matter of, I want to have a good quality of life like everybody else is having. And it just, you know, it amazes me how that one citizen came before you all, and now here it is, getting ready to, you know, we are voting on it, that's real interesting. So, like he said, see if you could find it in the 4th District or wherever, someplace else, because these people in these districts, they are saying that this is not something that they want.
If I could add on to that, to Edward's information as well, I do agree with some of the sentiments and thank Ms. Paxton as well for her petition. The reason that, you know, maybe this single petition became larger than it was, was because the city and MPC were already working on similar density programs and continuing to flesh out what an inclusionary zoning policy might look like for the city of Savannah, and didn't want to have a competing petition, and wanted to be able to see if we could find a way to move some things forward. And so Ms. Paxton has been incredible and incredible to work with, but I also don't want to make it her responsibility to have to meet with the neighborhoods or be, you know, chastised for not being able to meet with the neighborhood. She's just a private citizen and a volunteer in this effort, and that's really our responsibility, and we'll take that on to make sure that we have these conversations in the places that we need to have the conversations and with the people that we need to have them with. I also agree that we do need to be surgical. I sent council several weeks ago, an article, really a podcast, about Minneapolis's efforts to try to do something like this at a broader scale. And it is really incredibly difficult politically, administratively, programmatically. There are tremendous challenges with trying to create wholesale policy change within zoning. So I do think that our attempt, though we may not have struck the exact right note, was to be surgical here and to look at zoning districts that already allow or would accept these small additions of gentle density into the fabric of those neighborhoods. But we can continue to look and refine more about what that needs to be. And we'll have all the conversations that are required. I know that we met the notice requirements for these text amendments. We dedicated a workshop on this text amendment two weeks ago. MPC heard the presentation as well, and we'll continue to have all of the conversations. But I'll, you know, we'll continue to listen intently to the feedback that we're hearing from council and to go back and to further refine. I will say that these types of policies, there are always going to be some folks who may not think this is right for their neighborhood or for their district. And so I want to be clear that these are going to be some hard decisions that we make if we continue to try to work that housing plan and create the housing density that we need. We are going to have to be as thoughtful as possible, as collaborative as possible, but there are going to have to be some changes that we need to make if we want to create this density. Change requires change. But we can absolutely go back and look at other ways to perhaps implement this program and certainly communicate with the neighborhoods and residents and continue to get feedback.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I need to read into the record these two sentences that came from Ms. Etherea Maynor, who is the president of Can Jackson Park. She said, "Good morning, Dr. Shabazz. Just to let you know, I haven't met with Ms. Paxton. She wasn't willing to..." She wasn't willing to work with me and our board regarding building duplexes in our neighborhood." So I needed to make sure that I read this into the record. And this is a voice from the president of Can Jackson Park.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And I just, and I'm not, well, I'm not quarreling with you at all. It's just not Ms. Paxton's responsibility. She's just a private citizen with a petition of her own that we thought was worthy of collaboration with her and do not want to put that responsibility on her to have to meet with our neighborhood presidents. And that's not her issue, that's ours. And so we'll take that on. So just replace her name in that email with mine, and I will take that accountability and move forward.
All right, Ms. Manager, this is what we're going to do. Do you need two months, you need three months? What do you need? Because again, I'm also very clear about the time of year it is. And the reality is, is that you say what you want to, it's not even Thanksgiving, and folks got Christmas decorations. I mean, I think people have checked out in their mind this year. And so I want to make sure that you have the time to be able to do it. But council, you've got to do some soul searching.
Yes.
Because again, we keep saying to this man about what we want in terms of affordability for housing in this community, one way or another. The county doesn't have affordable housing. They're working on it, but we're doing affordable housing. And so if we're going to do it, then there are ways that we can do it. And I know we can't do it without density. That's just a fact. And so if we're going to, at the end of this process, figure that they don't want it, they don't want it, then we maybe we just need to not do it and just let the market take it, take it where it is. That is not, we're done. This is just not where I think that we said in our visioning session that we wanted to go. We were very clear with him about what it was we wanted, because we all had these stories about housing unaffordability in our city. So, Mr. Manager, how much time do you need? Do you need two months, three months, four months? Do you want to do three months and come back to us, two months and try to see how it goes? But I just think we should be fair to make sure we're not rushing folks into meetings, you know.
Sure. I think, you know, I'm fine with the January date. I do think that there is a lot of really great work in this proposal.
I agree.
I think that it's very thoughtful. I think it is surgical. I think there probably are places that didn't fit because they were a resident, a single-family residential zone that may be also appropriate, but that would have impacted others, and we'll take a look at that. What I would like to do, Mayor and council, with your blessing, is to start having some conversations with some folks that have some concerns and see if that through conversation and information, we can't learn more about what the concerns are and see if this policy actually doesn't meet our needs and that we do need to have a wholesale change to what we've kind of put together, or if we just need to make some tweaks around the margins. So that's what I would say. I think if we want to move this to the second meeting in January, and if we're ready to come back, and if we feel like we've had fruitful conversations and positive conversations with you and neighborhood presidents, then we'll be ready for something.
Fair enough. Mr. Clerk.
Can I get a question answered, please?
One, one, one minute. Mr. Clerk, what, the second meeting in January, what date is that? I'm still in November.
Mr. Mayor, do you need a motion for that?
One, one, one minute.
Yes. January 23rd.
January 23rd. Alderman Lanier, and then we're moving on.
Mr. Morrow, on the map in front of us.
Yes, ma'am.
Over there, just under the word Savannah, it's number nine. My name is up there, but that pink part, yes. Tell me what we're looking at right there.
So that is a traditional residential district.
Where are we? Don't see the, is that MLK?
That is.
That's Carver Village.
Right. I'm trying to distinguish that, so we'll be sure. Inside of the dotted line, that's Carver Village Historic District. Is that correct?
Inside, yes.
I believe the boundary there is Styles and then Feely, I think, to the north.
Right. So the pink is Feely?
Yes, the pink is south of Feely.
Right, right. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you're being, that it's Carver Village, Greater Carver Village. But anyway, so we have a lot of historic areas in the 1st district that are not designated historic, but they're probably 100 years older than some of the areas we are determining to be historic right now. And that's for many, many reasons, and the conversation is being had right now. But I believe in the missing middle. We need the missing middle housing type. I think when we were working on the new zone, even in the 1st district, we changed some zoning to, was it traditional TC? So we could accommodate some missing middle, but we're not, around the Bayview area, on the, on the east side, across Carroll Street, all of that was supposed to be for the missing middle, but, and the Clearview and all of that, but we're not discussing that area. We're more or less trying to force it into some areas that where it's not, hadn't been and not welcome. So missing middle is good. We need the housing type, just where we applied is what we, and how, is what we need to figure out.
And I would just say, I think we were looking at the zoning districts where that missing middle exists already, which Mr. Morrow and MPC noted, these are these traditional districts. So we do need missing middle in many more places, but these are the specific zoning districts where the missing middle either already exists and is something you can do there or did exist at one time, but through some zoning changes are no longer allowed.
Alderman Wilderbrien for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we use the January date to come back and revisit this.
Can you use the word continue?
Continue this matter.
Matter.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we continue this matter until January, what was that date?
23rd.
Moving forward, so that we can get some good stuff.
Second.
I'm probably moving second that we continue this matter to January 23rd, 2025. You heard the motion, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Oppose. Motion passes. Ms. Manager, I think you're clear on what you need to do.
Yes, sir, thank you so much.
I am number 13, is petition of Bridget Liddy on behalf of the mayor and Alderman of the city of Savannah for zoning text amendment to section 7.8.10 Savannah Historic Overlay District Design Standards, 7.8.10.T, 3.2 Footprint, 7.8.10.T, B, 1, and 7.8.10.T, B, 2, AI, so on and so forth. And Table 7, 8-1, high standards for large-scale development. Ms. Liddy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. My name is Bridget Liddy. I'm Director of Planning and Urban Design with the city of Savannah. I wanted to introduce, as I get started, our new preservation officer for the city of Savannah, Jessica Baldwin. She is here to help us develop a community or citywide preservation strategy. So as we move forward, she's only been here a couple of months, but she's getting her feet wet, but she's doing a great job with a lot of different projects. So expect things to be happening preservation-wide in some of these other areas with the previous petitions that you've been hearing. I'm here today because there is an error in our current zoning ordinance that pertains specifically to the downtown historic district overlay, and that has to do with the definition of large-scale developments. On your screen, you can see the definition of large-scale developments, where it's highlighted, what districts it pertains to when we're looking at more residential and more neighborhood-based zoning, based zoning districts within the zoning ordinance for downtown. Keeping in mind that we have a spectrum of zoning districts, one being more residential, going all the way up to very intensive commercial districts. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to make consistency with the large-scale development definition, as well as make sure that the large-scale development standards are applied to the appropriate zoning districts. So I'm going to kind of walk through with you some of the proposed changes. There are about four of them that appear with this particular ordinance change. As we go through to the large-scale development standards within the context of the ordinance, there are several different things that are considered when large-scale development occurs within our downtown. There's a visual compatibility criteria. There are specific development standards that guide large-scale development. There's also standards that have to do with the footprint and then mass. Honing in on the footprint portion, as you can see on your screen, currently, the way the ordinance is written is, it says DC, which is a downtown commercial district, once again, a little bit more intensive commercial activity versus it being a downtown neighborhood district, which is more neighborhood-based, which aligns more with the downtown residential zoning district. Therefore, we want to kind of make the change from DC, downtown commercial, to DN in this particular section, to ensure that those districts, those two districts, downtown commercial and downtown residential, line up and have protections. The next portion of the change has to do with standards for large-scale development related to height. For the first change that's highlighted here under number one, this coincides directly with the definition that we talked about on the first slide. DC needs to change to DN, once again, to align with the more residential and neighborhood-based districts in the downtown. And then there's also another change in this section that deals with the DC changing to DN, which would limit the additional height to a maximum of one story above the height map when it's located on different arterial streets within the downtown, when it's in a DN or DR district. And then finally, we have a table that kind of articulates the height standards, and this is a pretty significant change where we're looking at, within the DN and DR districts, the maximum heights range from about three to five stories. And when we have a development that's coming down the pipeline that is zoned either DN or DR, that is adjacent to a contributing building, meaning the building has some historic significant history to it and architectural significance, that it can only go up a maximum of one story when it's adjacent to a contributing structure. So with that, those are the proposed changes that we're looking at. If you have any questions, we'll be more than willing to answer them. But this is definitely something that will help to provide greater clarity in our regulations as well as protect the downtown neighborhood and downtown residential zoning districts and provide protections for our downtown district. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Any questions regarding this item? Going once, gone twice? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Ask that we close the hearing.
Second.
I'm probably moving seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Oppose. Motion passes. Corresponding item is item number 17, petition for what was already stated. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move at the first reading. We consider the second, and the ordinance placed upon us passes and pass.
Second. I'm probably moving the second into the first reading. We consider the second, the ordinance placed upon us passes and pass. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Oppose. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number 14, petition of Josh Yellen on behalf of Colin Breland, Malin Ott, and Zachary Schultz for Rosette Riad Bradley for a special use permitted 2805 Bull Street for bar tavern use in the TC1 Traditional Commercial Zoning District in Allamatic District 5. Mr. Morrow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a request that appeared at the MPC back in 2022, and it was a request for a special use that would allow a bar and tavern use in the TC1 zoning district. You can see that the subject parcel is already designated traditional commercial, and also it has that corresponding TC1 zoning. And so just to go back and look, this was considered on May 3rd in 2022. It's not within a local or national historic district, and the request was to establish that bar and tavern use. However, staff noted at the time that this was to be a wine bar that would also have a selection of beer. And so I think that is perhaps how there was the limitation or the implication that there would only be beer and wine. And so at the point that the petitioner at this time came in to pursue liquor sales, there was a question as to whether or not the intent was to permit liquor sales in addition to beer and wine. And so in going back and reviewing the petition, there was no specific conditions that were noted, no prohibitions. And so in looking at the conditions that were placed at the time, they were with regard to the hours of operation and ensuring that none of the structure was within the railroads right of way, and also that the special use permit be non-transferable. So those were the conditions placed at the time. Also, just for your reference, a floor plan for the 44 seats that were proposed, MPC and staff did recommend approval, and it was approved even by council previously. So just a point of clarification today for liquor sales at this location. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing. I have two folks up. I think, Mr. Yellen, I think you were on reserve.
Well, may I speak first if you don't mind?
All right, but you're not coming back? So I mean, you rather hear the comments first?
We can hear the comments first.
Okay.
I will defer to you. Thank you.
Trying to help you. Thank you. All right, we have Laura Walker and then Richard, is it Han Peter?
Linda Walker.
Did that pronounce it right?
Linda Walker.
No, no. Laura, it says Laura Walker.
Hello, I'm Laura Walker.
All right, it's Laura Walker. I'm reading it right here. Go ahead, ma'am.
All right, so.
And you have two minutes, so just go ahead.
Okay. Again, my name is Laura Walker, and I live within the 300-foot radius of this structure, and I received a letter about the special use zoning request. And I wanted to come and share my thought process for opposing it. I submitted a letter to the clerk of council, which was, the instructions given in the letter that I received. I wanted to share my thought process with you for consideration because when it came before you two years ago, I actually submitted a letter in support of it after having a conversation with late air business owners, when they described to me that it was going to be a wine bar, they were going to serve organic wine, and that you could purchase bottles of that to go. In my residential neighborhood, I felt like that was a low-impact use and very compatible and appropriate at the time. When I received this notice for the addition of liquor or spirit sales, I had a couple of concerns based on the information that I was given. Number one, I would like to say that after two years of the business being there, it is a little bit more impactful than I originally thought it would be. And with the addition of liquor sales, I feel like it would be an even more impact to more noise, more litter, and more light disturbance. I also, at the time, the property right to the south of it, there wasn't really any plans for it at the time. It was talked about being a three-story apartment complex with some commercial below. But now we know that it will be a three-story SCAD housing unit right next to this. So that's another concern. We now have the use, special use request with the liquor sales completely surrounded to the south of Victory by residential. Then I will say that it was really, is that my two-minute warning?
Yes, but, go ahead.
Thank you. The last thing is that the special use request with the addition of the liquor sales is, appears to be for the entire structure, not just the late air business use. So that's very concerning to know that it is, could potentially be a bar that's 3,000 square feet, and there would not be any requirement for any additional parking or anything like that. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you. My name's Richard Han Peter. I live across the street. Laura mentioned one of my concerns, and that is discrepancy. If you look at page four of the Metropolitan Planning Commission presentation that has the building elevation, it shows on the right-hand side that 2805, which is the current location of late air, occupies half of the building, but yet on the zoning maps, the triangle that's illustrated is the entire parcel. And if, as Laura notes, the bar extends over to the other two commercial endeavors, one of which is a clothing store, one of which is a head shop, then it kind of overpowers that area. The current owners of late air are very careful with just a couple of outdoor seating areas that could increase two to threefold potentially if at some juncture the bar area is enlarged. I've spoken with the owners, and they're sensitive to the fact that parking on 44th Street becomes very tight because of their employees parking there and then their guests parking there. And I understand they're going to push to get more parking along Bull Street, but with the coming of the dorm, that's going to be difficult. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Yellen?
Yes, sir. Josh Yellen, also a resident within 300 feet of this petition. So thank you for letting me speak here on behalf of the applicant. We were actually here two years ago and obtained approval for this use. And the exact hours and all the use conditions are showed on the screen before you. When, and you've seen me here before, probably for 90% of the special use applications in the city of Savannah. When we come before you and the applicant is restricted to beer and wine only, that is a condition of the application. I was here most recently for Six B Bakery. We included that as a restriction in the application, that this shall be restricted to beer and wine only. When we went through this approval process two years ago with the city and MPC, we were very clear that that restriction was not found there. I will also say, most recently, with Sobremesa in the 2nd District, they were also a wine bar that came before with the exact same petition. A restriction was not included in their recommendation for approval. They've already been approved to add alcohol to their wine bar. They did not have the second public hearing. We are here simply because we want to clarify, one, that the use conditions are in fact remaining. I know that the neighbors are here. I myself am a neighbor. This use cannot change ownership. I think that everyone likes, and the owner is sitting in the back, she can wave her hand, everyone likes the use that they have. If this use changes hands, the special use permit is not transferable. That new applicant would have to come back before you. What we're trying to do here was clarify something that even me, as the lawyer representing them, thought was already in effect. We were very clear when we came before city council and MPC that, yes, it was going to be a wine bar, but we want to reserve the rights to have alcohol sales in the future. I also want to clarify that this will not be a full bar. The intent here, this isn't going to be bottles and shots. They operate a restaurant with a full food menu. What they would like to do is have three pre-batch cocktails that get to be poured. This is not the place where you come in and see 100 bottles behind the bar and get to pick what you want. You get to pick what they have, and that's it. They're trying to keep the feel of the restaurant bar as it currently exists. But we were here because we were asked to be here because there was a slight misconception that the City of Savannah agenda last time said we were only beer and wine, and that was the only reference ever to us being in beer and wine was on the agenda item. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I am a neighbor, and obviously I'm in support of this application.
Well, let me, let me start. Ms. Walker raised some concerns that you did not address that I think are germane to this since it's before us.
Yes, sir.
And I think she would probably appreciate some explanation.
And so the requests were related to the parking, or was it the other concern?
Well, I think she raised.
That the special use covers the entire property, not just the late air portion.
That's it. Yeah, and this is only for the late air portion. What it covers is the blueprint that you're seeing on your screen. I think the misconception that happened here, and it happens with many properties, is that we have many properties, many shopping centers, is the best example, where you have one address, and it's suite one, suite two, suite three. When we came in for this application, and it's not showing up there, but the petitioner was Josh Yellen as agent for Colin Breland, Madeline Ott. Those are the owners of, or the tenants of this specific property. They don't have any rights to the, to the two suites next door.
Ms. Walker, still here?
No.
Oh, you heard that?
Yeah, it was not our intent for the whole building to become, to become a bar of any sort. Yes, ma'am.
Right. It does not, it does not. You good? Okay, continue.
No.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Aldo woman should ask.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded that we close the hearing, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Aldo woman should ask.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to move to adopt the agenda item as written.
Second.
Second.
And properly moved and seconded that we approve the particular Josh Yellen on behalf of Colin Breland, Madeline Ott, and Zachary Schultz for Rieth Bradley with the stipulations so discussed. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
Motion passes eight-one. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. I want to go home.
We all do.
Now, y'all want to come back tomorrow and finish this up, or?
No, let me make a motion.
All right. Let's go to purchasing items, items number 18 through 24.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of purchasing items number 18 through 24.
Second.
Flooding.
It's flooding. Y'all be careful. That's why we're moving towards stormwater fees to help manage this. Mr. Manager, thank you for the, for the demonstration of why we need a stormwater utility.
We had eight inches fall.
Eight inches already since we've been in here?
Since, since today.
Since today?
Yes.
It's flooding out there.
Yeah, we receive, I've received people texting about that. But I mean, again, it goes back to the point of what we were saying before.
Call Marine Patrol, you've got to get home.
I mean, we've, we've got to do something. We have just got to because it's just going to get worse. Anyway, moving through this so y'all can get home before it gets dark.
Need a motion?
There was a second to motion.
Properly moved and seconded that we authorize city manager execute contract modification number one for elevator repairs at the Liberty Street Parking Garage in the amount of $18,359. Nineteen, authorize city manager execute a contract with chlorine tank hoist replacement with cone cranes in the amount not to exceed $51,912. Item number 20, authorize city manager execute a contract for Holloway Decorations with Jubilee Decor LLC in the amount not to exceed $76,814. I'm sorry, item number 21, authorize city manager execute a contract for control panel upgrade from Aqua Aerobic in the amount not to exceed $98,931. Item number 22, authorize city manager execute a contract for tree planning services with CGS LLC, Primary ASAP Landscape Management Group, Secondary and Victory Hive LLC Local Turtiary in the amount not to exceed $61,661,262. Item number 23, authorize city manager execute a contract for 36 marked police interceptor SUVs from Santi Automotive LLC in the amount not to exceed $2,348,144. Mr. Manager, this is a state contract?
Yes, sir. We're piggybacking on this contract.
Okay. Item number 24, authorize city manager execute a contract for mechanical repairs and services with Ruby Collins Incorporated in amount not to exceed $9 million. You've heard the motion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item, in the resolutions, item number 20.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
In reference to number 20, the holiday decorations with Jubilee Decor, are we replacing our current holiday decorations? And if so, what's happening with the old decorations?
Mr. Manager?
We are not replacing, and I did send council a memo on this on Tuesday. We have been investing in holiday decorations for the last three years in neighborhoods, and we've been trying to add to our durable holiday decoration arsenal so that we can have a, a beautiful, bright holiday season in all neighborhoods.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, do not put those decorations up until after Thanksgiving, please.
It's a short season this year.
Please, please, don't do that to us.
Thank you.
Yeah, please, let Thanksgiving have Thanksgiving. Item number 25 is a resolution to defining affordable housing in associated terms and supporting the preservation, improvement, and creation of new affordable housing within Savannah.
Keep going, Mr. Mayor. Keep going.
Read them all?
Oh, item number 26, authorizing the city manager to transfer non-vacant lots in West Savannah to the Chatham County City of Savannah Land Bank Authority to facilitate development of affordable housing. Item number 27, resolution in support of revisions to affordable housing exemptions for development impact fee program under the Development Impact Fee Act. Item number 28, resolution authorizing the adoption of the 2024 Capital Improvements Element Annual Update following the approval of the draft report by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. You've heard the motion, all in favor indicate.
Po 26, please.
Po 26, I think it was a motion for, huh?
No motion.
Is it? There was, there was a motion?
No.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve items number 25, 27, and 28.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number 26, Aldo woman Lanier.
Yes, the mayor has read it into the record about the lots, nine vacant lots in West Savannah, and they're going to be given to the land bank authority to facilitate development of affordable housing. I needed to pull this because I have some concern, and we need to look at this a little closely. There were some properties purchased by the Historic Savannah Foundation from the land bank. And imagine, they became in possession of these properties the same way what we're doing right now in the city purchasing these properties, and then we placed them with the land bank. Well, what has happened with those properties is that the housing, the Historic Savannah Foundation did not build out those houses. They probably were old enough to be considered historic, but they, they did not do that. They placed them back on the market for sale. So for instance, the ones on Church Street in, in West Savannah and Golden Street, if they purchased those, I'm just going to throw out a figure, say for $40,000, but they flipping them to sell them for $80,000, $70,000. Don't, don't, don't hold on to those numbers, but this is the situation. And so therefore, the person that planned to actually prepare those houses for market or for someone to live on, that's going to be another investor unless someone want to live in it themselves and they purchase it from the Historic Savannah Foundation. Well, so what they're doing, they're acting as flippers, as investors, and not as someone who's coming in to purchase the properties because they're historic. And I'm concerned about that because that make the city culpable and put them a party to the gentrification. So we are purchasing these properties as the city, giving them to the land bank so they could be purchased by Historic Savannah Foundation so they could flip them, not, not develop them, get them ready for affordable. But they flipping them, and the fact that they're flipping them, they're making them more unaffordable. So I'm concerned about that. And, and Mr. Manager, I just wanted to mention it right now, if we could look into that because I think it's a problem with that practice.
I will look into it because that would not be aligned with what the requirements and regulations would be on land bank authority properties. To buy a property or to develop a property with land bank authority properties, there's a contract there, and the covenant is for affordability. So I'll look into those specific issues, but that would, that, that is, that would be completely incongruent with, with our regulations and policies.
Thank you, sir. I move that we approve.
One second. I share that same concern. Can you issue a report to council and let's detail the properties because I think we have to be very, very clear.
Yes.
That, you know, if we're saying for affordable housing, we don't need to be a part of, of the game.
I'm even surprised that that's permissible.
It's not.
If, if, if I've heard the allegation, I will absolutely look into that and, and provide counsel with the facts as I find them on that.
Mayor Johnson?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I saw on a document where a property, I believe it was with historic preservation, it came from the land bank, it's over at the Eastern Wharf for $3 million. Three to nine. What was it? Three to nine million. Huh? Three to nine million. Yeah, three to nine million dollars.
I did look into that one, and I could not find nor any record of Historic Savannah Foundation owning any property on the Eastern Wharf.
That was a PUD, so.
And I'm also not aware of, also not aware of any land bank involvement in the Eastern Wharf as well, certainly not since 2012 when that PUD came about. But nonetheless, I hear the concerns, and I will absolutely look into them because it's not the practice, and the land bank is a really important partner and tool for us to create affordable housing.
Even in, what is it, Woodville, there are properties over there going for $300,000 that was purchased from the land bank.
Can you give him addresses?
I most definitely will.
Again, I don't, I don't want us to deal with anywhere. Just give him addresses, and unless it's their land bank, we would know what those properties are.
The land bank know who they sold the properties to, and they know what's happening on those properties.
We'll allow him to do his due diligence. Aldo woman Lanier.
I move for the approval of the resolution authorizing the city manager to transfer these nine properties in West Savannah.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number 30, authorize city manager to execute land lease with Bell South Communications LLC AT&amp;T on Wilmington Island. The city of Savannah owns plus or minus 10 acres site on Wilmington Island that houses water and sewer facilities, of which Bell South Communications currently leases where telecommunication equipment and cabinets are placed. All in favor, oh, is there a motion?
So move, sir.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number 31, approval of a major subdivision, Oakwood Phase 2 in New Hampstead totaling 20.241 acres and will consist of 62 lots of varying lot size sizes located at 3401 Hollins Boulevard in Aldermanic District 5.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the agenda item as written.
Second.
Is that address correct?
Which number again, sir?
31. This, this seems, I'm feeling District 1.
District 1 with the Highlands.
Highlands Boulevard loops continues down after. Yes, sir.
All right. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Item number 32, this was passed at MPC, correct?
Yes, sir, it did.
All right. Approval of a major subdivision, Hill Durant's West Track Parcel B, a western portion of the land formerly known as the Hill Durant's Track, is property totals 167.354 acres and will consist of five lots of varying lot sizes.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Move to adopt the agenda item as written.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Mr. Manager, is 32 and 35 different?
Yes, one is east and one is west.
They are different. They're two, though I believe they're connected, but one's on the east side of the property, one's on the west.
Thank you. Item number 35 is Hill Durant's Track, East Track, Parcel, Parcel, Parcel B on the eastern portion of land in Aldermanic District 5.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt the agenda item as written.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. That ends our agenda. Hopefully, there are not a bunch of announcements.
I have one.
This is, this is where, this is where it can get interesting.
Give me start from this.
We'll start, yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay, so I just want to recognize and commend the Savannah citizens who have been listed in Georgia Trans 2024 Most Influential Leaders. They include Holmes Bell, Mark Burns, Scott Center, Anna Chafing, T. Mills Fleming, T. Todd Gross, Kay Harada, Paul Henchy, Robert Earl James, Eric Johnson, Sean Ketchmark, Griff Lynch, Joe Marinelli, Sam McCattran, Jonathan Pennell, Greg Parker, Scotch Shape, Chris Smith, Hughes Tripp Paulson, and Paula Wallace.
Thank you very much. Aldo woman, Miller Blakely.
Yes, Mayor Johnson, I just want to congratulate our district attorney, Shalena Cook Jones, on winning her election, our newly elected sheriff, Richard Coleman, our state representative for my district, Carl Gilyard, and county commissioner, A.D. Whiteley. And I just want to say to our young people, I'm so thankful and proud that you all went out and voted like you should have for this past election. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to everyone who was engaged in the process. Democracy works even when you don't like the result. Anybody else?
Mr. Dick?
Yes.
I want to give a shout out to Gina Davis from Greenbrier. They celebrate 75 years on November the 15th, and they still have tables available if anybody wants to donate to this worthy cause.